It's February 15th, 2021, and we are glad that you are part of our six o'clock meeting tonight. Welcome, and we hope that you'll find your time here profitable. We appreciate you being here with us. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across the nation that we begin with a couple of things. We'll begin with a prayer from our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor. This is called a solemnizing prayer. This is not for the audience, this is for the commissioners. We take what we do very seriously and we seek wisdom in all the decisions we make. We know that by ourselves, even together, we're not so smart at times. So we appreciate any wisdom that we can receive. So we'll have our chaplain come forward after that. We're going to have a pledge with a couple of, led by a couple of guests with us tonight. We first of all have Mr. Luke Mismer and also his friend Graham Shu. And we are honored that they're here with us, young patriotic Americans, to help us begin our meeting. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank the privilege to be here tonight. We thank for our county commissioners, Lord, and we thank you, Lord, for all they do for this candidate, Lord, and making a great candidate we live in, dear Lord. I pray tonight this meeting will give them the wisdom they need. Lord, you said in your word, if anybody lack wisdom, let them ask of God, which gives liberally, you know, pray if not. So give them the wisdom they need tonight, bless this meeting tonight, and bless them. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Gentlemen, if you'll come forward right here, just right on this side of the seal. Turn and you can get us started.
Our Lord and our beloved citizens, to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate, how about coming back up and let's give these guys a round of applause? You can take your mask off for a second if you like. Tell us where you're from, what school you go to, and what scout troop you represent.
I'm from Tower, my name is Luke Mismer from Tower Middle School. And I'm licensed to go up here, along and up through the full 30.
And we're in the shade, I'm from Spenceville, and I'm going to go through.
All right, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that Luke received a special award yesterday at our Scout Recognition Day at St. John's. And Luke, I'm sorry, but I forget what medal it was. Can you tell us?
It was God and Light.
God and Light, yeah.
Excellent.
Did you get one too? Okay.
Well, congratulations, and family, thanks for bringing. We appreciate you being here. We're sure that you're not, well, you're welcome to stay. Want to stay for all the stuff we'll be going through tonight, but thank you for being here. Now, let's see, I've got one addition to make to the agenda. This lease agreement's been provided for us. Unless there's an issue, I'd like to just add that as consent item number M, letter M, consent M. And then Commissioner Pierce, do you have an adjustment to make?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move item number nine to three A because we have people that are going to be here to speak, and I'd rather not make them wait through the whole meeting for their content.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's fine, we'll move item number nine, item three A. Are there any other changes, county manager, any other changes?
No, sir.
All right.
Do we need to add this?
No, we've got it under special.
Recognition, okay. All right.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some of.
All right, motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes from February 1st have been provided, motion second to approve the minutes?
Some of.
All right, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda's been amended, adding item M, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a special recognition we'd like to provide tonight. I don't know, we wanted to spend a few minutes to talk about a deer couple and a deer lady here in Rowan County, Nancy Standback. Is anyone here from that group? I know it's going to be hard for her to get here tonight. In fact, we're going to go to her with this. Once we pass this, we'll get this framed and taken to her this week or next. But these folks, if you know the Standback family, you know how important they are to this community and what they do for this community. And we are now dealing with, again, our animal shelter and its expansion once again. And I can remember being with Craig at the Standback's house and her talking about a vision of building a dog wing at this facility. And so they've been not only very instrumental and seeing that that comes to fruition, but as you make your way around the county, it seems like their fingerprints are on a lot of good that goes on around here. Craig, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, the only thing I'd like to say is this particular resolution is naming just one of the many things that they have done for this community. And I'm really happy to see us doing this. And you know, what was really, I thought, forthright with Miss Standback was we offered to aim to name the new adoption center for her, and she insisted not to. She would rather have it named for Nina Dix, who spent all this time with the shelter guardians. So that speaks highly of the character of this woman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Jay, I know you know the families, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, they're one of the families that makes this community really special. And as you said, so much better than I. They've touched a lot of things that we won't know about and touched a lot of things that we know and see every day. And so the value is immeasurable what they've meant for this community. Thank you, Standback.
Let me read our resolution. This is a resolution honoring Nancy Standback. Whereas Nancy Hart Standback is a longtime resident of Rowan County, where she and her late husband William Bill Standback have championed numerous projects, and together they became a hallmark for how a true partnership works through their efforts to give back to the community. And whereas Nancy's work has been frequently done quietly and behind the scenes with her compassionate nature driving her vision to help the needs of those of the downtrodden and often forgotten. Whereas her love of God's creatures and earth's creation has embodied the core of Nancy's desire to make a difference to those involved and for the betterment of all. And whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners hereby honors the generosity of both Bill and Nancy Standback for their dedication and commitment, including, but certainly not limited to environmental stewardship, the protection and welfare animals, and significant enhancements to the county's park and recreation system. Now therefore be it resolved that to ensure the Standback legacy is honored for generations to come, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby name the observation platform at Dunn's Mountain Park in honor of William C. Bill and Nancy Standback for their longstanding and visionary support of parks and conservation in Rowan County this 15th day of February 2021. Don, I know that you've had some, you've done a lot of work with them. Is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, not at this point. Most of it's there, it's definitely covered.
Oh, sorry to put you on the spot. Should have asked you early. Well, thank you. Commissioners, if we could stand and just maybe give them a round of applause. Like I said, we'll be presenting this to Nancy in her home either this week or next. We certainly look forward to visiting with her and letting her know how much we appreciate and love her and praying for her during this time. All right, do we have any public comment? No? Okay. All right, we'll move to our new item three A, which is propose changes to Rowan County ordinances, chapter five, section five dash forty-six.
This is Bob Pendergrass, the Director, Rowan County Director of Animal Services. On January the 19th, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, we conducted a public hearing to review proposed changes to the animal control ordinances. This was tabled until today, and there'll be some more discussion today. I understand we've got some folks that won't speak. Staff was approached originally to deal with a situation that, sorry. I guess that's fitting for the animal.
How did you do that?
I did not do that. In fact, I intended to lock him out of the room. But anyway, sorry about that. But we were dealing with an issue that was presented to us by some citizens and also discussed with Commissioner Pierce, this issue of some individuals that were feeding animal carcasses to their dogs in the neighborhood. And we were requested to come up with an ordinance to address that issue because we really don't have anything on the books to do so. And we proposed the ordinance as set forth in the written record that the Board of Commissioners has in front of them. I'll read it out loud. "It shall be unlawful to intentionally feed whole large animal carcasses to domesticated animals in public view." And we did put a little bit of thought in that because there's some different considerations that we wanted to take into account. We did do some review of the situation with the hunter organizations, spoke to the president of the North Carolina Sporting Dog Association. We spoke to the Wildlife Resources Commission. The sporting organization, Dogs Organization, had no issues with this, and the Wildlife Commission commented that they didn't really have any ordinances that dealt with it, and it would not be an issue for them. With that, I'd just like to submit the proposal for consideration and review in a public hearing.
Okay, any questions or comments for Bob? Bob, thank you for being with us, and your cat will make our first blooper real.
Proud to be a part of it, thank you.
That's good. All right, any questions for Bob? All right, if not, then what we'll need to do is we'll need to have a public hearing. All right, we're going to, we're going to have another, we're going to open it up again?
No, we've had the public hearing, we've just had the decision and discussion.
Okay. We've got folks that want to speak.
You may certainly allow.
Yeah. So we won't actually gavel in for a public hearing. We've already had that, so we won't have a second. But we will give certainly an opportunity for those who have come to speak, the opportunity to do that. So if you'd like to do that, come one at a time, just give us your name and your address for the record. And go ahead.
Paul Pierce, Beck Road, 145 Beck Road. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight about this problem. There is a problem with a neighbor we have in our neighborhood. He's gone to processing plants to get deer carcasses, bringing the bones back and feeding them to his dogs. And that in turn brings back buzzards. I've counted fifty to sixty buzzards inside his yard. And it's just a nuisance. And kids come up and down the road on Beck Road and see this, and it's just not right. And like I said, it just needs to be addressed. Kids shouldn't see this, and of course, we shouldn't see this at all because it's terrible to go out there in your yard and see fifty buzzards inside their fence, and then they'll stand in our yard or flock in our yard. So if y'all could maybe address that, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'm Chris Casper at 292 Beck Road. And I think one other thing that we would like to see, I believe the ordinance now reads as carcass, whole carcasses. Now, the main problem that we have in our neighborhood, there's also pieces of deer that are being thrown out. So there's bones all over the yard. In addition to, I think there was a whole carcass at one time. We do have kids in the neighborhood. This is done in the front yard, right at the road, for everybody to see. The buzzards, I mean, it's like as soon as morning comes, the buzzards are there. And not just a few, they're all in the yard. You know, the dogs are fighting for the bones and the meat, and the buzzards are right there with them. They're all over the trees in the neighbor's yard up on this house. Just the whole thought of what goes along with all of those bones, the germs, the disease possibly, being washed down into their ditch and then into everybody else's ditch that goes that way. So for us in the neighborhood, it's a big problem to have to see that every day. Anytime you go by, you know, like I said, there's bones in the yard. Once the dogs get finished with them, I don't know that they're ever removed. And we'd appreciate not having to see that on a daily basis and not having to worry about kids not only seeing it, but also the germs that can be spread from what's going on. So we appreciate the opportunity to speak about it and for you guys to address it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Jeff Bliss, I live at 255 Beck Road. I guess I'm bad at cleaning up here. The thing I want to get across to everybody about this is there's a cleanliness issue here. Now, these buzzards don't just sit there while they're there, we all know what they're doing. And one morning, because apparently I have nothing better to do, I counted over a hundred and twenty buzzards in those trees. You've all seen them sitting on the telephone poles and so on out in the country somewhere. Imagine that in your yard, because that's, they're there. They're for weeks on end, we have them every morning, they were there. I personally watched three of the dogs carrying a carcass of a deer, the rib cage of a deer, through the yard as three of the little children from across the street stood there at the fence line watching them do it. Then they proceeded to fight over it while they were doing it. And I don't mean just a little tussle, I mean a brawl. And these are large dogs. It's just not something you really want kids to see. And then again, the health aspect of it all. These things fly around over your houses and your yards and drop it all in the yard. The deer parts are unprocessed, therefore any amount of disease that the deer were carrying, now these dogs are eating that. So I understand, I can understand his point where he says, well, it's an inexpensive way to feed my dogs. I question how healthy he is, and it certainly isn't healthy for the rest of the neighborhood. So anything you can do to help us with that, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I have a question. Mr. Bliss, maybe you can answer this for us. Does this gentleman have any indoor kenneling or someplace where the dogs to go inside? Thank you.
Well, if, hey, could you, only because we need to get it on record, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
He's taken pallets and screwed them together and put a roof on them. Somewhere he put a canvas tarp over which, of course, the weather tore off. But these poor dogs, and we're not talking about a couple of them, by the way, we're talking about eleven to thirteen dogs, large breed dogs. Today, I can tell you, if you went out to see them, a couple of them are Great Pyrenees, beautiful white, large, nice dogs. And they're covered in mud, from laying in the mud. So what little shelter they have is minimal.
Question please. Are they chained or running loose in a fence? Or do they have plenty of shade and water and...?
Well, there are shade trees. Couple in the back, one really in the front. They had goats out there for quite a while, so the goats ate all the low hanging foliage off the trees. No, they just, they pretty much run free. The fencing is electric.
Yeah.
So when they run into it, they get zapped and...
And they keep water out there for them?
For the most part, they have big buckets standing out there. Of course, the last several days, they had plenty of rainwater, but you know...
Any other questions for these folks? Bob is, I'd sent you an email today, was the email that I sent you was about this? He's muted, you're muted, Bob.
Hit the wrong button here, sorry, I was hitting the wrong button. Yes, the email that you sent me today was about this. And I will say that early on, things were in pretty good shape, but we're continuing to follow up on it. And you know, this is, sorry.
Is your cat playing the piano?
No, that's actually someone sending me an email. Okay. But yeah, they had shelter, as they mentioned, they had built shelters various ways. Some of them included made out of board, pallet boards. They're not the prettiest thing in the world, but they have met our standards. I will say that we will continue to look on it, at it, and we may find some issues that we can address as things go on. The previous times that we've been out there, they have complied and met standards that were required. But there may be some changes that we're not aware of, and we'll go back and follow up on.
All right, thanks, Bob. Jay, maybe this is a, I don't know who this is a question for. I know that over the years, we all get calls. This is the first time I've seen something like this, but we get calls about the neighbor's grass is too high. The neighbor has a tree, this or that, the neighbor has a, you know, there's a lot of nuisance stuff. Unfortunately, we can't guarantee that neighbors will be good neighbors, right? We've had that discussion over the years. But it seems to me like that there have been times when there's been another county department that could go out and cite something because of health reasons. For example, if you've got a, you live in a neighborhood and the guy just won't mow his yard and it's neck deep in grass, then we can go out and say, listen, this is a rat problem, this is a snake problem. Or if there's cars in the front yard that become an attractive nuisance, I think is the phrase, there's some things we can do. Do we not have anything like that, that we could...?
We do. So there are two things. You have police power for zoning ordinances, which is what you're doing tonight. So you create an ordinance that it violates, you can enforce it that way. But we do have a general, more summary action. I've been working with Adrian on this with some other issues in environmental health. But we can determine that something is a public health nuisance in that it's a nuisance that creates a public health safety concern. And we can enforce generally under that ordinance. There are pros and cons to each approach, but certainly we have that authority within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of a municipality. They have the authority to abate public health nuisances. If it's obviously within a municipality, we don't, they do. But local municipalities do not have to have adopted ordinances to abate public health nuisances. So if it's in the ETJ of a local municipality, they could certainly help and do something too.
I don't think this will... No, it's nowhere close.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this kind of situation where there could be public health at risk and animals that are spreading, that's why we have a veterinarian on our health board. So she is also available to help work through this situation.
Thank you, Jay and Judy. My, Bob, am I to understand that code enforcement is going to be going out with you to take a look at this?
Yes, sir, I haven't contacted them yet, but we will have them out there. They have been involved, they have been involved in this since the beginning. There were, the time that they went out there and early on when we went out there, I've been out there myself in times past, nothing that we could take action on, but we may find that their things have changed, and we will go out and take a look at it, sir.
And Bob, if I'm not mistaken, didn't we involve the state with this particular issue? As soon as we got a zoning, a reading from the zoning department that they didn't have any jurisdiction on it?
Yes, sir, that particular discussion involved the breeding and sale of dogs, of which has never actually occurred. They originally were looking at breeding some dogs and selling them, and they're not doing that. We can't cite them for something that they've not chosen not to do. That was only based on some Facebook information that we found during the investigation. And it was just a discussion, it never actually happened. So there is no violation that the state can take action on at this point.
Put the county manager on the spot, just because he's a wealth of information. Can you give us some, we hadn't talked about this. Just give us some input from, I mean, you're familiar with all the departments, planning department, code enforcement. If they go out there with Bob, could you give us some sense of what they would look for and what authority they would have to address this specific issue?
Yeah, so I've asked Bob to ask Ed Muir, our director of planning, code enforcement, to go with him. And also I plan to ask him to ask someone from environmental health or the health department to go as far as, as far as code enforcement and planning and development, they're basically going to look for county ordinances that they may or may not be violating. And the health inspector, the health department, can look at additional violations of potential state laws and regulations that are a public nuisance or dangerous to human health.
In other words, we don't know.
Well, it depends, I mean, because there's so many different, you know, there's planning and zoning, which is local, local laws that they could be violating. And then there's potential state laws that they could be violating, which is what the environmental health or the health director can look at. And it just depends on what the circumstances are when they get there.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if he's feeding bones to his dogs, it doesn't seem to me that our ordinance is controlling that in the way I read it. We're talking about feeding whole animals, aren't we? Are we stopping partial feeding of wild animals or just whole animals?
Bob?
The ordinance was was designed to address whole animals. I think that um, that's a different issue when you start talking about. Feeding um, a bone with some meat on it to your dog. I think that um, that might cover. Some depth on the issue that we don't really intend to cover, but that will be at the discretion of the board.
But from what the neighbor said, uh, they didn't talk about feeding whole carcasses. They were talking about feeding bones.
Yes, sir. There were actually initially some whole carcasses that were left there, rib cages and everything intact. Um. And that's what we were originally trying to address. There may be, they that carcass may be scattered all over the place now. It may be that um, they fed more since then. We're not aware of them feeding any whole carcasses. We we really didn't have a law to apply, but we did go out there and have a conversation with them about it. And to my knowledge, which may not be true, which may not be complete, they haven't fed carcasses anymore. Uh, but then again, they may be cutting it up and feeding it to the dogs in smaller pieces. And I think a lot of people do that, especially with sporting dogs. But um, it was not our intention to address it on that level. Of course, like I said, that's. Up to the discretion of the board if they want to pursue that.
So to put uh, other folks on on the spot here, we've got Adrian from environmental health and we've got our health director here. Um, Adrian, I'll put you on the spot. Could you, and you're the head of environmental health. So could you come up and i- if, is this something that you as the director of that group would would have any kind of jurisdiction over? Or be able to, you know, to have anything to say about this?
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, one of the the laws regarding a public health nuisance. Um. One thirty A nineteen reads that the secretary or local health director determines that a public health nuisance exists. The secretary or local health director may issue an order of abatement directing the owner, leasee, operator, or the person in control of the property. To take action necessary to abate the public health nuisance. If the person refuses to comply with the order, the secretary or local, and that'd be the secretary, I assume, of uh, the Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, local health director may institute an action in Superior Court of the county where the public health nuisance exists to enforce the order. The action shall be counted for trial within sixty days after services of the complaint. Upon the defendant, the court may order the owner to abate the nuisance or direct the secretary or local health director to abate the nuisance. Health director, secretary, health directors ordered to abate the nuisance, the department or local health department shall have a lien on the property for the cost of the abatement of the nuisance. And the nature of the mechanics of the material lien as provided in chapter forty four A.
Well, that means that our health director, would Nina, would you like to come forward?
So, uh, I was unaware of this situation, Commissioner, um, but to me, just listening and hearing, I'm so sorry.
That's alright.
Just listening and hearing.
Yeah.
Hearing about this, it does fall under, and Jay said we would have to work together on this. It does fall under one thirty um, A dash nineteen. Abatement of a a public health nuisance. Um, I look at it as more of a communicable disease aspect versus an environmental health aspect. Because you have uh, if you have large pieces of meat in carcasses, what does that bring? It brings vermin and rodents. What does vermin and rodents bring? Disease. Um, so that simply, when I, when I heard this, I thought, oh, this probably, we probably need to be involved in this. So we can certainly, um, I can certainly work with Jay in the morning and whoever you want me to work with and figure something out.
Okay. Boy. Know what's going on tonight? Uh, did the girls win a world championship softball thing again? Is that what's going on? Maybe they did. Um.
Just put the sign out for hot donuts.
Hot donuts. Oh, that wasn't right. Okay, okay. Um, well, thank you, Nina, and uh, we'll we'll uh, talk with you about that, okay? Um, I I'll just, I'll tell you where I am on this because I appreciate people spending their personal time because they um. Uh, feel, um, well, they don't feel, they see it right next to their house and they're witnessing this. Um, so you expect those that are elected to represent you to do something, and I appreciate that. Craig has been. Um, uh, ve- very uh, engaged in this and he's talked to us about it, so. Uh, we appreciate him bringing this to us and the um, commitment that he's shown toward it. Um, uh, we'll we'll have a vote on this if that's where we want to go and that's what we want to do. I I would personally like to give our health director an opportunity to try to abate this. Um, thi- this is, it seems to me to be an extreme example of just a bad, a bad neighbor. Um, there are lesser examples of bad neighbors, but when you're in that situation as the neighbor of a bad neighbor, they all seem bad. Um, I just speaking for myself, I I personally want to stay away from. Um, creating new ordinances, new ordinances because of one bad neighbor. Because we're doing that now to the entire county. And um, a- again, if you take taken a silly example of, well, my neighbor's not mowing the yard. And and it makes my yard look bad, and I know they're not the same thing, I'm just giving an example. Well, if we could pass an ordinance that says you've got to mow your yard. But how how do we, one, enforce that, but two? Um, i- is that what we really want, that um, everyone uh, has to mow the yard? But maybe the yard next door is a hay field or yard next door is, you know, it it just. We we kind of back ourselves into situations where making uh, an ordinance and an ordinance. Will address the issue at hand, but we might be uh, addressing issues that we don't want to be addressing. So I don't, what I would like to see is uh, our. Our code enforcement folks and our health director, um, given the opportunity to try to remedy this. Um, and and if that doesn't work, then I'm willing to come back and have that conversation, but I'm. I I'm only one commissioner. I I want to fix what the situation is. Um, I wouldn't. Want to live in that situation. I live in a subdivision with a homeowners association. I'm the treasurer of that homeowners association. Some folks think I'm the president, I don't know why. I get all the calls, you know, my neighbor's dog's barking, can't you do anything? And so there's um, I I get, I I really do, and you invest in your home, you you don't. You live out in the country sort, you live out really kind of near me, near Craig and I. And uh, th- this is the most extreme that I've seen. This is, this is bad. Um, but before we make the, before we pull out the sledgehammer to to drive in the nail, I'd like to see, can we fix it? And I know you, um, this came to us a couple of meetings ago and because of uh, statutes. Um, all of the commissioners have to vote on this, and so I think Mike was out. And then I was out last week, and so this is dragging on uh, further than we would want it to, and so for that, we apologize. But if if you'll give us the opportunity to try to exhaust um, all all of the. Um, the capabilities that we have of fixing this without creating an ordinance. A countywide ordinance just to deal with one bad neighbor, then we would appreciate that. If that can't happen, then we will welcome you back here um, to, for us to try to address it in another way. So i- is that, is is that okay with you all? I mean, we're we're, we really are doing this in good faith, and thi- this is just, this is me. Now, if the other commissioners say, no, I'm ready to call for a vote on it, and let's let's put it in, then we can vote. Um, because it's majority rule. I'm just telling you from from my, we're all on equal footing here. I don't decide. So it's, this this is just my opinion. I'd like for us to be able to try to fix it without an ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, could we set a timeframe for that? This has been going on since September.
Uh, we we could do, could we, we could do it in the next meeting.
Yeah, I thought we were taking turns. I was waiting.
Very good.
I apologize because I had, I guess it's partly my fault that we're where we are, because I got activated by the um, CNPD in Washington. But Bob, my understanding from some of the comments, they're they're feeding raw meat, raw carcasses to the dog.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They had, in my understanding, had acquired, like the citizen said, some deer carcasses from a local butcher. Or whatever they would be called, and uh, put whole carcasses out there to start with, and that's what we were trying to address.
So, or um. I guess the question, or one of the questions I had, is it legal to sell raw carcasses like that?
I don't believe they were sold. It's my understanding that they were given to them for some reason. I'm not sure of the reason, sir.
Commissioner Casky, I'll address that for you. Um, there is a processor down in Gold Hill that. A lot of these hunters, if they shoot a deer, they take it to him and he breaks it down and renders it out. What they're getting is the bone carcass and the hide, and that's what you're throwing out in the yard and letting these dogs fight over, and then eventually the vultures fight over it. Uh, and now it's gotten to the point, what he's doing is actually taking uh, the the large bones with scrap meat left on them where they've. You know, cut it down to make hamburger and each kind of things and throw them out in the yard, so. Um, I'm with, you know, our chairman. I don't want to regulate the world, but at the same time, we've got to have an answer to this problem. And and to me, this is, I hate to in invoke one policy just to take care of one bad neighbor. But then again, we don't know what happens next. I mean, if if this is not fixed, what keeps the next guy from doing the same thing? So s- so I'm I'm trying to look at this thing from a standpoint of a permanent situation. And you know, the health department's got a lot on their plate already, not to have to run out every time we have a situation like this. So to me, that was the idea behind putting the ordinance together, and it's just one line. It's not like we're restricting everybody in the world. And it simply says that don't do this in plain view, which means if he wants to take it back behind his house in the woods. I don't think that's as big an issue as right in the front yard, you know, where all the kids are riding their bikes up and down the street, so.
Well, that was one of my questions is um, so we're just adding line, our item E, uh, A through D already exists.
Correct.
Um. I agree with Commissioner Pierce that we don't want this to happen again. But the fact that the vultures are there and they're carrying bones into people's yards. Um, that is most definitely a public health nuisance. And when we look at the statute in this area that our um, county manager just cited. Um, not only can't this person be fined, but they can be taken to court. And a lien put on their property. So, um. There there is a remedy, and I think that we just didn't know what it was. And I would start by slapping a lien on them.
Well, Commissioner Klusman, the problem is this person is a tenant, they do not own the property. So when you start leaning the property, you're leaning the person that you're renting to them, which happens to be the grandmother. And, you know, Bob and and Clay Martin have both gone out and spoken to the lady, and she's just not going to do anything about, so.
Well.
Well, let let me try to apply some logic to this, and I know we're spending a lot of time on this, and I'm sorry. But as this is written, it says it, and I think this is what Jim was getting to. It's unlawful to intentionally feed whole large animal carcasses to domesticate an animal with some public view. If we pass this tonight, all they have to do is cut a deer in half. And throw it out there, and they complied with our standard, and the buzzards are still there, so we didn't fix the problem, right? Whatever we do tonight, the problem still is a bad neighbor. So in my opinion, the only way to fix it, uh, or or at least maybe the 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 easiest way. From our perspective is for the health department uh, to to render a decision that says, whatever you're doing out there is bringing. Um, bones and um, uh, vultures and rats and snakes, which is a public health hazard. I I don't think this does, it it it, it may throw a Band-Aid out there, but if I'm this guy. Then I'm just going to go around it by cutting it and by quartering it and throwing it out in the front yard, and there's nothing that we can do about it then, because. And and we don't, we don't want to create a an ordinance that goes deeper than this, that says you can't throw any bone out there because that. Man, that gets us, what, your ham bone from Christmas, you can't throw out uh, to to your dog. And so we don't want to, we won't go there, is my guess. So I've, you've been shaking your head, I think, and saying, give us uh, uh, give us some time. If we can, um, if we can meet back at the next meeting, is that okay, Nina? That'll give us time, will give us two weeks. Craig wants a a a date, and I think, well, that's the first date we would have. Again, he's been championing this for you guys, so uh, he deserves a lot of credit. So if we can just try to get some answers from our health director and from um, our folks in planning. We can come back, we may not come back. It may be that it's fixed, and we don't need to address it because it's been taken care of. So is that okay with you guys? Okay. Craig, is that okay? Well, we'll uh, we'll put it back on the next meeting's agenda unless we hear that it's been settled. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. Um, county attorney, he's. So when it says in the statutes that. Um, that the person can be cited. For a public health nuisance. Um. And then the health department can take any action necessary to abate the public health nuisance. Isn't that something that the county is able to do, or do we have to go through our district attorney?
There there are are two different statutes that deal with public health nuisances. So the one that the manager cited to you under one thirty A requires court action for us to go on the property and actually abate the nuisance, which means. I guess haul off a carcass. The the one fifty three A chapter abatement of of a nuisance is a summary sort of process where we can. Go on the property and abate the nuisance, and and that's, but you have a bunch of process on the front end. You got to, you have to send a notice, you have to have an administrative hearing, they have to have an opportunity to appeal to Superior Court. It's heavy on process on the front end, but we can go do it. And the lien is what it costs us to go abate the nuisance. Um, is what you were referencing with regard to putting a lien against the property, and even if it is a tenant, we can lean the property. Whether it's a tenant or the homeowner doing it. Um, but one thirty A, what you're asking the health department to do is going to require court action for us to actually go fix. And remove a problem. Um, she can issue an order that it's a public health nuisance and demand that they not do it anymore. Um, and and we'll work together on those standards, but I think you identified just in the discussion tonight how difficult it's going to be. Under any statute to determine, you know, whether this is a cat and mouse game. Somebody calls, we go out, there's nothing there anymore.
Yeah.
You know, if it's not there, we can't cite it right away, and and you know, we would have to get video or pictures or whatever, and.
Yeah.
And, you know, we just play a cat and mouse game of when they're violating and when they're not violating. You know, is a ham bone from Christmas going to be a public health nuisance? Um, or is it a whole carcass? I mean, you've identified the very problem, which is identifying what, at what point does it become a public health nuisance? That we can take action, and so, but but we'll meet and talk about it and and figure it out, but. Um. I mean, it's, that's what we'll do.
So Jay, what do we, uh, what do we do at this point? Um, do we, do we table it?
Yeah, you're going to table it for one more meeting, um.
So it'll come back up and we can just either take action or. So it'll come back up and we can just either take action or, uh, or be done with it.
Correct. And then again, if it's, if it's, if you do take a vote then and it's not unanimous, you would put it on for a second reading.
All right, good. All right. Is that good with you guys? Everything good?
I think about this point, but we, whatever the great thing is, it's not all right on us.
We, um.
There's so many issues at that, the grid, that we need to address. And they're looking to get something resolved. For us as neighbors into this all.
Yeah, this, this is, you know, this is bad. So thank you. And, um, unless it's settled, we'll see you back in two weeks. And Commissioner Pierce, thank you for being flexible on this. So, all right. All right, we'll move on. Item four, update from open broadband. Welcome. Yeah, good to see you. Did you, did you bring any barbecue?
Next time. See if I can, somebody's got the mouse moving automatically. That's awesome. Um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. This will be a, uh, a quick, um, update of where we're at in just a second here. I'm Kent Winrick. I'm chief technology officer and co-owner of, of the company. I live, uh, in Rowan County, so I have a keen interest in seeing things happen. So how do I get this to show, uh, go and do? Let's just go this way. And that's the wrong presentation. Okay, tell you what, I'm just going to do verbal. So where we're at right now is, um, we have, uh, we've taken the money that, that we've got received from the, um, from the, the county and we've purchased all the equipment that we need to make, make, uh, make the installs and the equipment that we need for getting customers online. We've created agreements with towers that we can broadcast from. Um, we've also started, uh, giving out, or I should not say giving out. But we've had some service. We have temporary LTE service to some customers. There's a gentleman out in Mount Olive that praised us pretty highly for, um, getting out there and helping him out. He had nothing and he works from home. So we've got little LTE boxes that we're using as a temporary basis only to help some people out until we get everything fully deployed. We, uh, other things that we have accomplished recently is we've received our FCC licenses for our links, our wireless links. It took a while to get the FCC licenses because of the transition of government. The FCC kind of turns over. We, um, have, we've, uh, done a, a what we call a backhaul drop. That is where we're getting internet at our main tower site here in Salisbury. And so we've got power there. We've got backhaul there, which means we've got internet. And then we just have to put up the antennas on top of the tower here in Salisbury. Um, we are working with a group over at The Springs, which is on High Rock Lake, just across, across the way with a very high spot. And we're going to be putting a tower there. So we, we've identified the location. We have the purchased the tower already. And it's just a matter of waiting for the rain to stop so we can get some concrete in. Um, it's going to be a little bit, going to have to let it dry out a little bit before that to happen. We anticipate, um, um, getting the tower up in March and start looking at having, uh, people coming online in April, be testing in, in the March and start getting people online in April. And this is for the eastern part of Rowan County. And then we've got the second part, which will be, uh, Scotch Irish and the like, which is the second, the second part of, of the agreement that we have. We're also talking to organizations about getting Wi-Fi into underserved areas such as public housing or, uh, getting something into rural areas where kids can drive up and get access if they don't have access yet. So they don't have to go to McDonald's or some of these other places as well. So we're talking to a couple of organizations about doing that. We're presently doing that in the city of Charlotte and also in the city of Goldsboro, where we are covering, uh, public housing areas with Wi-Fi so that the residents can, can get into doing jobs and, and education. Of course, they can use it for entertainment as well. But it's, it's part of, uh, what they're, um, it's part of their payment for the public housing. It's part of the public housing rent, if you will. So instead of each individual, um, um, resident getting their own, we just cover the whole campus with Wi-Fi. And we've got, I think, 25 different locations down in, in Charlotte. And we've got about five locations in, uh, Goldsboro and we have some others about. We're also putting up rural, um, access points at like fire stations and, and anywhere else that we can get, uh, get some internet to the kids can pull up. But the, the, the main thing here is that we've got all the equipment we need. Uh, we've got the licenses that we need so that we can begin to install the equipment. Um, we just got to wait for the rain to stop or getting the tower up. The main tower is already, it's already there. So the main tower is good to go.
Where, where is the main tower?
It's on Stateville Boulevard. Just up the road from your office. And we worked out a agreement with that, that tower. So, um, that's going to be our main tower for the whole county, which will broadcast out to the other towers. Presently, we have a, um, a 500 meg service to that location. We are going to do a complete fiber into that location. That whole area is going to be changing a little bit. And we're waiting for understanding how that's going to transition. So we've got like a temporary box set up for internet and power and the like. And so that will all be transitioned back into the tower once we get a better understanding for what's going to happen at that location. But we've got what we need to make things happen. So, um, towers, towers have been identified. Some people are starting to get serviced via cell LTE. And like I said, we've got all the equipment available, including we've got a warehouse that we are renting right now. And we've also hired a couple of people. One is a tower project manager. And another one is a, just another project manager. But we're going to need to hire some installers in, within Rowan County. So, uh, in the not too distant future, we're going to be looking to hire a couple of people to do installs for us in this area. And we're still looking for a regional manager that would cover Rowan, Stanley, Mecklenburg, Concord, et cetera. So we're still looking for a, a slightly higher level position. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've got one. Um, can't just, the main tower on Stateville Boulevard, is that owned by the city?
No.
Okay.
Private entity.
Okay.
When did you, um, when did you think you'd start hiring your installers?
Um, probably late March, early April. So we're going to start putting some, probably start putting feelers out in the next couple of weeks.
That be, uh, because people always ask me who's hiring. Would that be something on your website?
Yeah, our website, social media. Um, we have a lot of followers on Facebook. Uh, we get a lot of interaction on Facebook. Um, but we will, we will make it on social media and, um, also on LinkedIn. There's, there, there's a lot of good activity on LinkedIn as well. And we'll try to work on some more local, local flavor to, to the communication.
The, you have the, the tower on Stateville Boulevard. You have a tower in the eastern part of the county which, that you have leased. Or is going to?
The, the tower in the eastern part of the county is one that we have purchased. We've purchased the physical tower. It's in, it's, it's not put together yet. Um, but it will be going up in the eastern part of the county.
Well, have you, do you have a lease there with somebody?
We have, we have an agreement with the neighborhood at The Springs. They're going to allow us to put a tower up at a very prime location. It's the best location that could cover all of eastern Rowan County.
And then Westford Second coming back and I'd soon have something with Young's Mountain or somebody in that particular area.
We already have, um, a, a letter of understanding from the owners of those two towers at Young's Mountain and from the, um, maps that I've been able to, propagation maps that I've created. It'll cover well past, uh, Mount Olive. And up to Scotch Irish, which is one of our goals. Absolutely. That's the goal, is to make sure we cover Scotch Irish. But I've been hearing a lot of rumbling from the Mount Olive area. We get, we get a lot of messages from people saying, when are you going to come here? When are you going to come here? So, um, Mount Olive has been very vocal.
Get the same message.
Yeah.
So. So you're just waiting on the rains to cease. The floodwaters to, to recite. All right. So you realistically think that you can have people start going on this thing in April or May?
Yep. Like, and, and it's all about maintaining expectations. Because a tower goes up doesn't mean everybody's going to get it overnight. But that being said, we want to hire those people local for installers to get started on that. And we've got another crew that comes behind them and trains them and, uh, also works side by side with them. But we need local people as well. We always try to hire locals as much as we can.
Kent, what do you pay for installers?
Um, it's usually done a per install and I'll be honest, I don't remember where that is what I'm paying. It's, it, it pays pretty well if, if they're efficient and they can make some decent money.
I, I don't, I'm sure there are some, but I don't know a more pressing issue for our county and for rural communities across the country than broadband right now. From a security, from economic mobility. Uh, everything wraps up into that. I, I know we've initially talked about the east and then some areas in the west. But the goal is, is that, uh, every home in Rowan County have availability.
Right.
And, um, I, I, I want it to move quicker.
Okay.
How can we get it to move quicker? I know, I know that's a silly question. But, you know, our, our, well, it's from the education standpoint, um, you know, kids are supposed to start going back to school. But, but they still have to go home to, to know internet. So how?
Well, I, we could probably work a little more parallel. Uh, we've been focusing mainly on the east right now because that was the directive. And we get it. We understand that. But I believe that we could also begin to start working on Young's Mountain in the west. Um, because we'll be able to cover a lot more of the counties that way. Um, so if we start working on some of that in parallel, it all works off of the hub of that main tower in Stateville Boulevard. So once we build this infrastructure of that main tower, a tower out in the east and a tower out in the west, that's our core infrastructure. And we can cover a lot of people once we get both of those towers up and running. It's a lot, it's a lot easier to get to the tower on Young's Mountain because it's already built. That's a no brainer. That's easy to do. It's much tougher when you start, uh, working on something that is, has to be developed. And that's what we're working on now.
Uh, maybe in the next couple of weeks, Commissioner Klusman was on that, uh, committee. Uh, I was on that with her. And, uh, maybe along with Randy, maybe the four of us could get together.
Absolutely.
Like to really understand kind of where we are, get a timeframe locked out. So, because we do get a lot of questions.
Right. Happy to.
Uh, again, I think this is, uh, one of the top five issues we're dealing with right now is, is the issue of broadband. So, um, and then kind of hear from us, you know, what we'd like to see.
Kent, can I just ask one, one last question, Chairman? Can you, can you tell us in English what kind of service that we will be receiving once you have the towers in place?
There are going to be a couple of levels of service. One level of service is what we call line of sight. That means that you have a location on your property or you can see the tower that we're, that we are broadcasting from. That's line of sight. That can be up to 300 megabits down. So we're very competitive, or competitive, we're, you know, we're bypassing some of the other, other solutions out there. And we're doing it at a lower price. Um, another one is called non-line of sight. So if you're in trees, which, what part of North Carolina is really not in trees? That's called non-line of sight or, or CBRS. And we are going to offer about 150 meg down for most areas, up to 150 meg down in most areas, um, with that type of LTE. It's, it's, it's a brand new type of, of service that is available through a vendor that is, is, is very well known in the wireless community. And Rowan County is going to be one of the first ones to be, to getting that type of service. Um, most other LTE services have been like 25 meg, much slower. So we were, we're capable of doing 150 meg, up to 150 meg. There are going to be some areas that are further, deeper in trees. You may see it come down a bit. But we're seeing a lot of people are just ordering like 25, 50 or 75 meg um, of bandwidth and that's all they really, really need.
So it certainly would be enough to service our kids with what they need to get instruction.
Yep. There'll, there'll be plenty of bandwidth for Zoom calls, anything the kids need to get through. People doing their jobs from home. There'll be plenty of bandwidth and we've got 18 counties that we're doing it in right now. And, um, they've been very pleased with the level of service we're giving them.
Kent, um, help educate me here. So I have hot wire fiber to the house here in Salisbury. So how does the speed compare to what hot wire?
It depends on what, what level of service do you have with hot wire. Obviously, I'm very familiar with, with the hot wire infrastructure. So, um.
Yes, you are.
Just a little bit.
But, okay, so if you have basic service, what is it, 40? I can't remember the numbers. It's like 45 and then 110 or something like that?
Yeah, it's, that's similar to what we'll, we'll be offering as well. Especially the LTE area, which is non-line of sight. The line of sight, we can, we can really turn it up. There are some areas where, and it's a short, fairly short distance, it's like a kilometer we can cover. We can actually provide a gigabit wirelessly. So if we have some areas that may need some businesses or something like that, that really need very strong connectivity, um, we can provide that. Or backup, uh, emergency services, um, that could use a, a different, a different line of communication. In, in, in the, in the ISP business, it's called a collapsed net, network. And that is where all the fibers or all the connectivity goes into one area. We would provide a different route, completely different routes, uncollapsed. Um, and a, a lot of, um, strategic businesses may take a look at, at doing that because it is, it, it makes sure that you have a different vendor. In case one vendor goes down, we will be there to, to pick it up. And what's nice is that we are wireless, so we really don't have a problem with too many back halls or back hoes, I meant. It's called backhoe fade is when they dig up and they dig up the fiber. And, or somebody hits a telephone pole. So we don't, typically we don't have that problem.
So the speed that you have, it's the same going up, this uploading versus downloading?
It is for, um, line of sight is not for non-line of sight. I know it's a little confusing, but, um, just the way the technology is, is designed, um, a CBRS, non-line of sight is heavier on the download than it is on the upload. But I, I could pull up graphs on usage on our networks and other areas where I will see, like, for example, Mount Olive, which is out near Goldsboro. I will see them pulling down 650 mags and upload is about 20 for the whole town. So it's, it, it's, it's a matter of how we work with the network to make sure that um, you're getting the maximum upload that you need without sacrificing your download.
Yeah. I know that that's, um, we hear advertised a lot of really high download speeds. And they don't tell you what the upload
Right.
is going to be.
Yeah, everything will be laid out very clearly, um, because we don't want any surprises. We hate, we hate that. We're customers too. So we, we've been through all that. Um, and we don't, we don't want to have any surprises.
All right. I think we're good. Kent, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Appreciate it.
Stay dry.
Can we move some stuff around, Jim? We got folks that don't want to spend the night with us. Can we move you down? Is that okay? We move some stuff around, Jim. We got folks that don't want to spend the night with us. Can we move you down? Is that okay?
It it's okay with me.
Who who else is? Oh, we've got other folks here. Alright, come on, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no.
Good evening. I hope you all are well. Um, I promise I will be super quick. I have a brief presentation to go over with you of the fiscal year twenty audit. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you this evening. Um, please feel free to ask me questions as I go along. I do have a lot of numbers to go over with you, but I will be quick. So first of all, I want to. Figure out how to go to the next slide. Oh, there we go. Okay, so audit highlights, unmodified clean opinion. That's the goal of the audit. It means there's no reason to think any of the numbers are materially misstated. And very cooperative staff.
Excuse me, could you take your mask off, please? I'm really having a hard time understanding.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Thank you.
It you have no idea how much you actually read people's mouths even when you're listening, so. Um, very cooperative staff. Um, as you all know, Wesley was not here to complete this audit, so Jim and Derek and the entire team did very well to. Help us have a smooth transition this year, so we really appreciate them. The general fund summary this year, revenues increased twelve point two million or about eight percent. And expenditures increased eight point seven, so about six percent. And then next few slides will show your fund balance. So this serves as a measure of the financial resources available. Um, there are five classifications. Non-spendables such as prepaid or inventory, any external restrictions. And then the committed level is the committed by the board and then assigned is just a lower level of constraints such as subsequent years expenditures. And then unassigned is the only amount of your fund balance that has no restrictions whatsoever. So total fund balance this year increased about three point seven million. And the available fund balance is the definition that is used by the local government commission. So this takes your total fund balance, backs out any of the non-spendable. Or stabilization by state statute, and this is the calculation that they use to compare you to other counties within your population group. So the slide, this slide shows you your available fund balance went from thirty-five point two to thirty-six point one. And if you take the calculation of your total expenditures and transfers, then this figure, this percentage is twenty-three point five percent this year. And um, the LGC wants this to be above eight percent. So as you can see, your available fund balance is in a healthy level. This shows the breakdown of that available fund balance calculation. You can see it went from the uh increased eight hundred and ninety-two thousand this year. And to back out from that available fund balance number, which is what the LGC uses, this also shows you. The other restricted, committed and assigned amounts, and it shows that the unassigned fund balance was eighteen million at the end of the year. And it increased two million over last year. The next few slides will show your top three revenues. So um, the largest percentage of property taxes, sales tax and restricted intergovernmental. And the next few slides will show you how those three revenues compared to the prior year. So property taxes increased. Six point seven million or eight percent over last year. And I'm sure that would have been even higher had COVID not hit last March. The local option sales tax increased one point nine million or seven percent. And restricted intergovernmental had an increase of four million or about twenty-one percent. And one point four million of that increase was due to the coronavirus relief funds that was received and spent by the county. The next few slides show your top three expenditures and the top three are education, public safety and human services. Education increased one percent or about five hundred and fourteen thousand over last year. Public safety increased two point four million or about eight percent. And last but not least, human services increased three point eight million or fifteen percent. And this is your social services and health, those services. And debt service decreased three percent over last year. The next two slides will show you a brief overview of your enterprise funds. So the airport fund. As you can see, it did decrease a little over last year, but we all know airport activity did go down last year due to COVID. And um, the net income, it it looks very large at twenty nineteen of one point seven million and it went to a negative three fifteen. However, last year there was a capital contribution from Duke of two point two million, so that inflated last year's numbers a little bit. And then the landfill fund did increase over the prior year. The unrestricted net position increased two million and the net income also increased as well. And I know that was a lot of numbers very quickly, so please let me know if you have any other questions.
Could you please tell me how much the uh social services increased again, please?
The expenditures increased three, was it three million? Over the prior year? I know there were a lot of um increases with like economic development and. I can't remember exactly what the other ones were, but I can dig into that some more if you'd like more explanation for that one.
Yeah, just the human services part place. Thank you.
You don't know anything off the top of your head, do you?
I don't, but Commissioner Klusman, we we can look into it for you.
What did you say an unrestricted net position was under this major enter enterprise fund?
The unrestricted net position, that's at the end of the year what that ended. So you have your fund balance and your enterprise funds. And you have your amount that's a net investment and capital assets number, so it's restricted by the assets of that fund. And then what's left is unrestricted. So that's that number, that's that figure.
Alright, it's hard for me to understand. That increased two million dollars, basically. Your cash flow operations increased four hundred thousand dollars. And you only had a fifty thousand dollar increase in the net income. Is that possible?
Alright, you're talking about the landfill fund?
I am.
There's a lot of different things that factors in. Um. Any asset acquisition purchases would be in that net investment number and not the unrestricted number, so um. Trying to think what else could have. Another thing to factor in that net income figure that does take out your current depreciation numbers, so that's. Something that would cause that number to be lower, whereas your unrestricted net position wouldn't be affected by depreciation. Um, all of your OPEB benefits, um, local government, retirement, those salaries. That hit those funds would also come out of the net income as well.
I think we can talk about that too.
Okay, yes, sir.
Anything else?
Jim, any comments from you?
No, I'd just like to say, Kerry, thank you for you and your staff did a wonderful job. Being really my first year kind of running this uh the financials, it was difficult and Kerry and her team really helped us out. So we appreciate everything they did.
And we will have a hard copy of the report to you as soon as we have the LGC approval. So if you have any other questions when you are reviewing that, just please feel free to reach out and I'll help. Answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
That's your first hurdle, Jim. Well done.
Thank you.
Hate to make you all wait, but it's probably good to be able to just sit for a while, isn't it?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. How are you guys? Alright, so we'll pull up this report. Have control of this. Some good enough. Too big. Okay, so the uh, we're going to look at the January eighteenth through February the fifth. This is actually a three-week stint. I was trying to get these back um closer to the reporting date. Um, so we were running about two weeks behind from reporting and getting on the agenda. So this is actually within a roughly about a week, um, little over a week at this point, week and a half, something like that. So. This is over a three-week period and not a two-week. Um, so you can see, uh, we had well inspections of twenty-eight. Uh, well, well inspections completed, well permits requested during that timeframe of fourteen. We had none waiting. Um, soil site evaluations, a hundred and twenty-six. Uh, every one of those do require a site visit. Uh, forty-eight soil site evaluations requested, twenty-four were still pending. Improvement permits completed were twenty-seven. IPs or improvement permits requested, forty-eight, improvement permits waiting, twenty-four. Existing systems, six. Uh, were completed, zero were waiting. Nitrite, nitrate samples taken, five, thirteen were waiting. Uh, pesticides, uh, none, we have received no applications or have taken any. Final septic uh system inspections, we had twenty-three in that same timeframe of January the eighteenth through February fifth. Well grouse, we had eighteen. Uh, complaint visits, ten, we had twenty-eight waiting. Individual applications were thirty-four, uh, builder applications were fourteen and we were two weeks and one day at that time. Scroll down here. Oh my. Think we had this problem last time. It is jumping some of my data to where it's falling on the page breaks. That's okay. We have individual app, uh, individual inspectors data for. Uh, site visits made, which include uh well, well sites visited as well. From the timeframe of January the eighteenth, which actually was a holiday to February the fifth. You can see inspector one had nineteen, inspector two fifty-four, inspector three thirty-four, inspector four forty-nine. Inspector five nine. Uh, number of permits issued, uh, you see inspector one through same timeframe. Um, inspector one had twenty-three. Inspector two fifty-one, twenty-nine, thirty-six and four. Number of site evaluations. Specter one had eleven, expect follow by specter two at thirty-nine, twenty-three, forty-four and eight. You can see each and each inspector's hours worked. Again, keep in mind, these are on a three-week. Uh, a three-week period here. There we go. I'll get this one further down here. Three-week period. So then we have the food and lodging. Reports on that. Which have. From the same timeframe, I'm trying to trying to get everything back in the timeframe. We have ninety-five inspections completed. Percent completed would be four point seven eight. And inspections to date, starting July first, would be a total of forty point one nine percent. I would also like to say I have interviews, one this week and one next week with authorized food and lodging folks. So I'm gonna do some interviews in the next couple of weeks. Um, so we did get two applicants for that. Uh, I did speak to one person, potential intern, uh, that was uh. Questioning if we did receive your application, um, spoke with them. So that's a, that's a positive. Try to move, move forward with that.
You go, you go through that quickly. Um, I have two questions. So how, how many do we have waiting now for soil?
As of this report, we had twenty-four, as of this report.
Twenty-four total waiting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
They're good?
It is good. We had a uh two-week rough backlog.
So, so you're. Talking eight to ten weeks, now we're down to two weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Getting better. You're halfway there.
We have good help. We have, we have good help. Uh, so we're, we're, we're getting there. We're getting, this weather is not helping us. I can say that. Uh, it is, it is a mess right now.
How's uh, how's your team doing?
Doing great. Great, um, minus the weather thing, uh, we're, we're having some issues with uh as we dig holes to evaluate the soil, they're actually filling up with water. As we're digging. Sounds like it's not doing any better, more justice for us right now either. Uh, so yeah, I mean, but they're doing great. Um, everybody's very positive.
How, how long before uh you'll be up and going on?
So two, uh, two folks actually off and running, use them every day. Uh, we're transitioning another individual in. I myself tried to take it out and use it one day. It didn't go as planned. I ran into a bunch of bad soil and I've got to go, I have to go back to evaluate the backhoes. Uh, he had a lot of unsuitable stuff. It's it got to where um, I'm seeing potential usable material at three plus feet, so I need a machine to get me to that. Um, I'm gonna go back and GPS that stuff when I get that. Um. Uh, we're, we're transitioning in. I think we're doing good with that. So we get everybody up and moving with that. I think we'll be.
Adrian.
This man.
Um, quick question. Uh, the twenty-eight complaints that you listed. How long of a timeframe have those been waiting to be resolved?
Uh, it varies. Some have been there for for quite some time. Uh, it varies. I I don't know off the top of my head, but I can look into that.
Yeah, um, you know that I'm particularly interested in the ones that were not correctly done. That we have to go back and mitigate. So are any of those left?
Uh, uh, we've had a, it's actually kind of slowed down on that, um, on those. We haven't received, had any issues lately. Uh, we're still in process with uh several of them.
Okay, then the other question I have is, um, what, um. How do the food and lodging people uh report? Are they still using paper or iPads or?
They actually use, alright, so one uses a laptop and it and they all use a program called CDP. Um, they all, I I see that what they do. So when they go out to a restaurant and they inspect it, I can see where they were at. Where they gave it, time they were there and how long it took them. I can, I can calculate all these reports out. And one of them has a laptop and one of them has, it's called a GTAC, it's a tablet. Um, I think it's similar to what the sheriff department may use, but I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on that. I've just been told. Um, so we have two different. Types of 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 computers in there.
So do you have enough for the um additional people you need to hire?
Yes, yes, we have two uh sur, well, not surplus, but from other positions available, still sitting there, just waiting.
Adrian, thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you, thank you.
Dina.
Alright.
But by the way, we'd like to welcome Derek Caldwell. Uh, to our meeting tonight, former. Uh, grand hubba of uh Novant, who is recently retired, congratulations. And uh, she's, yeah, she uh was appointed by this body to the Board of Health and then elected as chair. And so she brings a lot of uh experience, um, world of experience to the health department. So. Thank you for doing that for this community. We appreciate you. Thanks.
How do I, how do I um flip the? Is there a clicker? Oh, April. I went just back and forth like that. Okay.
Alright, so good evening commissioners, I am here to talk about COVID nineteen readiness and response. It's all we've been doing for, oh, well, we're going on a year next month, but it's kind of switched from COVID testing to now vaccination. And I am here to provide you with an update. I gave this similar, very similar presentation to the Board of Health last week. There's some new updates, so I've changed it a little bit. So COVID nineteen vaccine overview guidance for the local health departments come directly from the State Department of Public Health. Guidance changes often and swiftly, the need for us to adjust and be flexible is of the utmost importance. Partnerships, collaboration, and clear communication are vital to the sustainability of any large-scale response. The Rowan County Public Health Vaccine. Response is rooted into some guiding principles. Several of these principles are similar to DPH's principles. I've listed them here, equity, equitable access to vaccines based on risk of exposure and risk of severe illness. Transparency, so we want to be transparent, accurate, and communicate frequently to our public. Data-driven decision-making, data is used to promote equity, track progress, and guide decision-making. Responsibility, continuous evaluation allows us to make improvements to better serve our community and distribute the vaccine efficiently and effectively. The vaccine current, we're gonna go over the vaccine process. Public health goal is to vaccinate the Rowan County community as quickly and equitably as possible, given the limited supply of vaccines we receive each week from the state. So how does Rowan receive our vaccines? I want to go over this, this current process. The state receives an allocation from the federal government every Tuesday. The state allocates vaccine to all one hundred counties by Wednesday and Thursday. They deliver them, yeah.
That's based on population, is it based on what?
Population, basically.
We should get the same amount of vaccine every week.
That's what we're getting for the last three weeks, correct? Population in need, so the last three weeks we've been getting, well. The last three weeks, we received a baseline, which is what, we will get no fewer than three hundred doses. And then on.
Hundred?
Yes. And then on top of that, they will give us some additional doses, which they did last week. So we got around three thousand doses last week, and we gave out, we ran clinic Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday to get rid of all the, the doses, this coming week, we will only receive three hundred. So that's all we've received, that's all we get, however.
Seventy thousand people to vaccinate.
Absolutely.
And you're getting three hundred doses of medication.
Absolutely awful, I've called representatives, we've talked to the state about it. We are, we have really good relationship with some of our surrounding counties and with our FQHC. So I have called and reached out to them, we've received doses from FQHC and will be receiving doses from Carreras Health Allowance.
Who else in the county gets vaccine?
The hospital, us, and the FQHC. Federally qualified health center.
How, yeah, how, how do they get vaccine, what's it based on?
Sure. It's okay. I may, but I'm comfortable with any way the commission wants to do it.
Why don't you just move ahead?
Okay.
Yes, I'm married, I'm used to that.
Okay, so local health department, so we went from, so the state will allocate vaccine to all one hundred counties by Wednesday and Thursday. Number three, local health departments and other providers in the county are notified of our allocation Thursday night or Friday morning. Providers, which, which would be us, must then accept or decline the vaccine allocations by twelve noon that Friday. Providers will receive vaccines on Tuesday or Wednesday of the following week. All vaccines are required to be administered and entered into the CBMS platform. The CBMS platform is the state-required system that we have to use in order to give the vaccines. So all vaccines are required to be entered by Monday evening of the following week. So this gives us and other providers five days to hold vaccine clinics. So once we receive our vaccine next Wednesday. We will have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday to hold clinics. And by Monday, all doses of that week have to be done, and all those doses have to be entered into the CBMS system. Our current response, public health is in a unified command with emergency management. A unified command is an authority structure in which the role of the incident commander is shared by two or more individuals. Each already having authority in a different responding agency, for example, myself, being the public health director and Alan Cress, being emergency management. Planning task force and planning meetings are held by multiple departments and take place almost every single day, including weekends. And oftentimes, we do find ourselves having more than one planning meeting a day. So Rowan County COVID response, what we started out doing was, we started with a mass dispensing drive-through method. We chose that method for different reasons, but it is the quickest way to get vaccines out to the public. However, as you heard about kind of our guiding principles, one of our guiding principles is responsibility. And we want to make sure that we are also offering services that the community wants. So we did get lots of feedback, and I'm sure you all did too, about wait times of that dispensing, of, of that large mass clinic. Wait times were long, my, my mama stood in that line for five hours, so. We made some adjustments, and we are now at an appointment-based system. And so from start to finish, it's around fifty minutes, fifty minutes to an hour. Appointment process, so you are familiar with how the appointments are made. So every Monday morning, appointments open up by phone and online. And individuals are able to call the health department starting at ten, or go online and make their appointment Monday morning. Once an individual has an appointment, they come to the West End Plaza on their appointment day. First dose reminders are sent through emergency management's reverse nine-one-one system. Reminders are made by phone and by email. Individuals come to the West End Plaza for their second dose. Reminders are also made through reverse nine-one-one for second doses. They receive a time range for their second doses to attend the second dose appointment. And that's usually a two-hour block between eleven and one. You know, ten, well, it, that was just an example, it's not just eleven to one, but it's a two-hour time block. We have started a waitlist process, waitlist process is utilized, we cap it at fifty people. Each time we get doses, we can pull from that wait, this waitlist, and each time we have doses left over after a clinic, we can use this list. We currently have no one on our waitlist. We capped it at fifty for, for a reason, there are lots of counties that do not have a cap. And they're, they are at ten thousand, twelve thousand, fourteen thousand people on their, on their waitlist. This is how the flow looks, it's a very simplified flow, but just so the commission gets an idea of how, how it goes. So people will enter, they are greeted by law enforcement. They then drive up and get paperwork, well, they do, we have a soft triage. Meaning since we're still in groups one and, one and two, they have to be eligible in order to, to meet the vaccine or get the vaccine. So emergency management does a soft triage and then provides them with paperwork to fill out. Once they have filled out their paperwork, they will come around, wait, they, during their waiting, they will. Health department staff and volunteers will review their paperwork to make sure it's correct, eligible, and. Completely filled out. Once that is done, they move on to vaccination, they receive a vaccination, and then they move on to observation and, and wait. So there are folks that have to wait for fifteen minutes, everyone has to wait and monitor it for fifteen minutes. There are smaller population that has to work, wait for thirty minutes based on past health issues or past reactions to the vaccine.
So they're out of their vehicle, in lines, and walking through these different areas.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, this is all drive-through, so no one, no one gets out of their car. Vaccine, as of today, February fifteenth, Rowan County COVID providers have dispensed eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine first-dose vaccines and four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine second-dose vaccines for a total of sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighteen doses, or eight percent of our population. I would like to point.
How many individuals would that be?
Eleven thousand, so first doses would be eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine.
But the second dose would be part of that eleven thousand, wouldn't it?
No, the eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine is first-dose vaccines. And then the fourth, now we're getting into second doses, so, and then so far for second doses, we've, we've vaccinated four thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine.
Okay, but I think where Commissioner Green is going is when you get to your total doses and put a percentage on it of our population, are you using sixteen thousand or eleven thousand nine hundred?
I, I, you know, that's a good question, I would assume, and I, I can double check, or someone can do the math real quick, I, I'm not good with math. But I would assume that the eleven thousand, the eight point four percent would be off of the eleven thousand. Okay, okay. So also, and to clarify, this is a big clarification, these numbers are pulled from our required system, our CBMS system. There also are active COVID cases that are given by the VA system and then also given by the federal long-term care facility program. Those are two completely separate programs, in which we have no way of getting numbers for. So we know the numbers that are entered into CBMS, which is eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine of our, of our community has been vaccinated based off our CBMS system. There is more people in Rowan that have been vaccinated through the VA and through the, the federally long-term care facility system. I, I am working, and I'm also working with Randy Cress to get those numbers, it seems. Very difficult to get that additional information because they're a federal program. And, but we're still working on it, but the good news is, we, the, the county has done more than eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-two doses. We just can only count what's in our system.
Does that also count the people that have gone outside the county to get their shots?
Yes. So that's, vaccines are given by groups, this is a snapshot of what the groups are. So currently, I'm gonna break groups down a little bit more, but currently, we are in group one and group two. So healthcare workers and long-term care staff and residents, and group two, older adults. So group ones and group two, estimated total of around twenty-six thousand individuals in Rowan County. Group one includes healthcare workers who have the potential for direct or indirect exposure to clients, bodies, or infectious materials. This includes nurses, pharmacists, optometrists, EMS dentists, dental assistants, et cetera.
February thirtieth, VA vaccinated five hundred veterans.
On that, because they were probably holding clinic that, that day. Oh yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. Group two includes anywhere, anyone over sixty-five years or older, regardless of health status. So we are. Going to move into group three soon, group three is a, is frontline essential workers. We are not yet in group three, but the state will open a limited section of group three on February twenty-four, next Wednesday.
Do they just randomly open changes? You said there's twenty-four thousand that are eligible, and we've only vaccinated basically eleven thousand people.
Correct.
But now you're gonna skip over to two, when you still have half of the population that hadn't been vaccinated.
That is correct, Commissioner. That's a state call.
Comes from the governor, out of the state.
That is correct. So we have not opened group three yet, however, it will be open to a select amount of, of folks, and we're gonna go over that shortly on February twenty-fourth. So on February twenty-fourth, the focus will be on K, kindergarten through twelfth. Teachers and education, educators, and childcare, so our childcare facilities here in Rowan. The remaining groups in group three will open on March the tenth. This is a very large group that contains eight following industries. Political manufacturing, education, essential goods, food and agriculture, government and community service, healthcare and public health, public service, public safety, and transportation. So just a chart there, breaking it down of those, of all the industries, the eight industries in. Group three. Group three has about thirty-five, it's an estimated thirty-five thousand in group three in Rowan County. We started last week to gather group information, numbers in interest in vaccines. Public health has requested numbers from all K through twelve schools in the county, and that includes our public and private schools. And we are working closely with Smart Start Rowan to get data from childcare centers. Once, once the group is open, we may have to stratify the group even more, based on the amount of vaccine we have. As we still have to serve group one and two, so I, I want to talk a little bit more about this. So we're gonna be opening next Wednesday on the twenty-fourth to a, a small section of group three. That includes, as I said, K through twelve and childcare centers. The issue with this, as Commissioner Green kind of pointed out, is we still have folks in group one and group two to vaccinate. And then we have this, this large portion of group three that we now have to vaccinate. The Health Directors Association has put a formal request in with the state and the governor regarding a specific allocation for this group. We see it as a problem that if we are supposed to vaccinate this group of teachers and health and childcare workers and we don't get a specific allocation, it's gonna be very difficult to do. We had a very good conversation with the Rowan County School System today, working out a plan with them. So we are looking at a worst-case scenario with the school system, we've got numbers in place. But say, say next week, we'll know our allocation by Thursday or Friday of this week. But say the state gives us our allocation. uh, we'll know our allocation by Thursday or Friday of this week, but say the state gives us our allocation on Friday, and again, we get three hundred doses. So, that can be a reality. Uh, we discussed, um, we discussed it with the school system, and what we have asked them to do, and what they are um, looking at uh, doing, is if that is the case, out of the three hundred uh, uh, doses, we will have to um, uh, reserve a portion still for Faye, for groups one and two, and then the other portion has to go to our school system, um, and to our daycare. So, um, we've asked the school system to also stratify groups even more. So, the governor's request was to get K through five back into the schools. So, a, a way that they would have to stratify is instead of doing K through um, high school, we would focus on K through, K through five, in order to get that group back into school. In addition, if there's not enough vaccine, we would have to also stratify even more with age. So if we've got a, a second grade teacher, um, uh, who is um, sixty-five and older, they would be the ones to get that first allocation of vaccine, since there's just not enough to go around. We are hoping that our request is heard by DPH, DHHS, Mandy Cohen, and by the governor, so we don't have to stratify. But, uh, the reality is, is we, we probably will not get the additional doses we're asking for. Commissioner, I wish I knew. There, there, I mean, what the state said was, well, I'll say this.
No, 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 I, I made it instead of mass vaccination events.
Mm-hmm.
That they'll migrate for us. Is that why we got three thousand one?
So, semi-
Is, is any of this-
Yes.
Within our control, and if it is, then why aren't we doing it?
To a certain extent. So, um, we have a, a baseline allocation um, of three hundred, so we know we're gonna get three hundred. Um, we also last week received a allocation for equity vaccines. Equity vaccines go to the vulnerable populations and underserved, so we also got that. The week before, I had put in a request for additional doses, for an event-like week. I requested two thousand additional doses. That is what they gave us. They did give that to us. They switched our vaccine up, though. So, instead of Moderna, which is what we've been using, they switched us to Pfizer, um, which is a little bit more complicated, but we gladly accepted it. Now, I am going to be doing the same exact request this week. However, because, just because we request it does not mean we're gonna receive it. I know a few counties that have requested it and never received it. But um, for our teachers going live next week, I will put an event for those additional doses.
How many weeks have we been given vaccines?
We're about week nine.
Then we're about twenty percent of where we need to be.
Uh, three hundred were equitably, equitable distribution.
A base three hundred, that's two thousand. I'm, I'm just trying to, not wanting to admit, if, if, if I'm trying to figure out. And so my question remains, um, I think that we're in the table.
Yep, we can. We can. W- w- we can. Sure, and, and I'm gonna be asking for it this week. We can, we won't always, well, I, I can't speak for Rowan, but I know counties like Gassing County has put, um, requested in, in one week, they received nothing. And um, the health director, of course, as you can imagine, was very upset. So, they didn't even receive three hundred baseline. Um, so, um, I, I will uh, put an event in this week. I will do that tomorrow for next week to try and get um, enough vaccines for our school systems.
So, uh, that, that is the challenge. I understand that Novant also gets um-
An allocation? Nine seventy-five, yes.
So, um, who are they?
The same groups, group one and group two. So they-
It is.
Correct.
Okay, so, if I'm, if I'm getting my mom or dad in the car, I could either go to the town, or either call, or I could go to the lot.
Correct. You do.
But the one at West End Plaza is drive-through, the one to Y, you gotta get out of the car.
Yes. So, I think, is, isn't that true, um, you know, that
the Novant clinic is for their patients?
No, it's, it used to be, Commissioner. It used to be. They opened it up, uh, I think maybe a week and a half ago.
Okay, good.
Yeah. We, w- well, I was actually in contact with Novant, um, Desiree Dodson, Dot, Dotton, um, this, this evening. Dodson, um, this evening about possibly working with her, um, uh, and Novant and Gary. Um, and a- again, this is preliminary, uh, but to get um, uh, the, the school system done. So, see if we could do a collaboration, uh, to get the school system and the daycares done together. Yep. Sure. And, and uh, Desiree said that she was gonna talk to Gary and some of corporate and see their feedback, but they've been great partners this whole time, so.
Yeah, and I think there are some things where they're also-
They are.
It's gonna be, I'm gonna show up next month, it's gonna show up next year and year after. And our kids are suffering, and so, to take that issue away, and here, uh, vaccinating, I would think would be one of our county's top priorities. We can text them back and forth, we've got the school system on that tech, we've been part of that. So, I think a request from this board, if there's anything we can do, coordination here in Novant. So, let them know what a high priority is. Vaccinating, um, here.
Sure.
There's models out there where they're doing that, that are being part of it.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, all right, so, next we're talking about transparency and communication. So, transparency and communication is, is very important in that um, we want to increase our susceptibility, or acceptability, excuse me, of vaccine. So if you look at this uh, this chart here, in the middle, we've got passive acceptance. To the left, we've got refusal, and to the right, we have demand. Um, uh, we do see, it's, it's very interesting with, with the groups that we are vaccinating now, especially the sixty-five years and older, um, there is a very high demand for the vaccine, and that's great. Um, that group is at highest risk for uh, health-related issues if they catch COVID. Um, uh, as you kind of go down um, in, in, in the uh, in age, we're seeing more of a passive acceptance, or a more of a, I'm gonna wait and see. And so, it's, it's so important for us, uh, and, and, and this is part of what public health does, is to educate the public on why we should be getting our vaccines, and I, and I wanna share this with you. So, a vaccinated person helps to slow and prevent the virus from circulating, continuing to circulate in the community. The ultimate goal is to get as many people vaccinated so that more people are protected. The entire population benefits from high vaccination coverage. Once a population reaches a point of collective immunity, where the disease is no longer likely to spread, it reaches herd immunity threshold. The estimated for COVID nineteen, in order for us to reach herd immunity threshold, is roughly fifty to eighty percent of the population that needs to be vaccinated. So, there are many benefits to this, and I've listed a few. Reduction of hospital visits, less mortality rates, less morbidity rates, less, fewer days of folks missing work, um, not able to make money for their family. Um, so, that's one of the things that um, we try to strive to do, is to continue to communicate um, uh, the benefits of vaccine. I, I, I can't answer that, Commissioner. I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so.
How long is, how long are these vaccines effective for?
So, um, we're looking-
We don't know.
We don't know. There has been some articles-
Okay. I was in the trials. We don't know how long it's gonna last. I will tell you that I had my shots in September, yeah. At September, and as I tell people, I don't have a third arm or a third eye, so um, I think it's very safe, but, but-
Man, it's not safe. I'm just asking when, what is it?
We don't know, and I'm in the trial, and I will be followed, plus all the sixty thousand other people that were in my trial, for two years. We will have our blood drawn, and we will see how many antibodies are in there, and that's gonna determine when we're gonna have to have boosters.
Well, how often do you test it?
Well, I had it done one month, and three months, and it'll be six months, and a year. Yep.
So you, you can tell by the antibodies, how, how effective they are at that point in time.
Right. So, maybe it's one year, maybe it's gonna be two years. Some people at the beginning thought perhaps three years, and that would be-
If they don't get any more vaccine to us, it's gonna take us two years to get enough people vaccinated. And if they're only good for ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, we'll never reach herd immunity.
Yes. Um, so, in order to help us with that, um, we formed a public health communications team, um, at the health department. This team does many, many things. We provide frequent press releases, social media posts that reshare information from um, DHHS and other trusted sources. Uh, we provide medias, uh, uh, interviews um, to the media. Um, we disseminate information to coalitions and community partners. We target dissemination based on the phase. We have frequent updates to our website, webpage. Uh, we have established a COVID nineteen hotline, uh, in English and Spanish, where people can call to uh, receive information. Um, the COVID line is monitored twenty-four seven, uh, by uh, public health nurses. In January, we received about eight hundred COVID calls to that line. Um, we've got a team that monitors and answers all emails that come in. And we have uh, weekly and frequent meetings with the following groups. Long-term care facilities, Novant, uh, Health Rowan, community leaders, K through twelve with weekly meetings, DHHS, DPH, and we recently restarted our higher education meetings this week, which Commissioner Ed was on. Vulnerable populations and vaccine equity. So, as, as we all know, and, and as we've discussed throughout the year, um, certain populations are uh, impacted by that, by COVID disproportionately. So, African-American and Hispanic communities have been disproportionately impacted by the COVID nineteen vaccine, or virus, excuse me. African-Americans suffer much higher mortality rates across North Carolina. Hispanics uh, experience significantly higher positivity rates than the rest of the population, and we saw that in Rowan. Um, we are trying to decrease these disparities by offering equitable vaccine opportunities and specific equitable events. So some of the things that we have done and are currently doing is we have um, a, a Latinx or Hispanic coalition coordinator that is targeting the Latin community through churches and um, uh, Hispanic radio. We are also working with um, Ilya Jagorik, who's a realtor and well-known within the Hispanic community. She was also on our Board of Health for about nine years, so she's, she's a strong advocate for public health. We've, as, as I've shared, we've established a COVID nineteen hotline with English and Spanish information. The FQHC, or the Credit, Federally Qualified Health Center, is working their migrant farm clinic to provide vaccines there, and utilizing their mobile clinic to provide additional outreach to Latinx populations once a week. We talk with Novant weekly. Um, Novant held an equity event this past Saturday uh, at the uh, Salisbury Civic Center. We are also looking at partnering with Novant for future equity events. Uh, we worked with Mayor Mallett. Mayor Mallett has been an excellent um, partner for us. We did a lot of testing in East Spencer. Um, so, uh, Mayor Mallett, uh, once again, offered her community for a, um, for us to plan a, a vaccine event there. And we did one this past Friday at the North Side Community Center.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, reaching these vulnerable populations. When we're looking at the Salisbury Civic event, how many folks were vaccinated there?
I, I am not sure, Judy. I can get that. Uh, that's, that was a Novant event, so I can get it from, from Desiree or, or Gary.
Okay. And what about um, East Spencer?
I believe it was one sixty. We are working, uh, we just started um, really good conversation with Head Start. Head Start um, ha, is predominantly employed uh, by um, uh, minority population, and um, they have invited or asked us to try to, kinda do town hall education for them next, next week, to talk about the vaccine and why it's important, um, so we'll be working um, hand-in-hand with them. The homebound community, we just discussed plans with emergency management to use paramedics to travel to homebound homes. However, um, we were lucky, um, and received assistance from Meals on Wheels to set aside, and we set aside doses for individuals from Meals on Wheels for this past Saturday. And I believe we had twenty-eight um, Meals on Wheels uh, clients come through. We are gonna be holding events and have ho- held events on off-hours, including evenings and weekends. Uh, and again, we have multiple Spanish-speaking staff that are available to make COVID uh, appointments and answer any COVID uh, questions.
So when, when will we have um, the clinics that Ilya is helping to set up, and where will they be?
So that, that is what my uh, uh, our um, Latinx coordinator is in the middle of working. I don't have that information handy, but can get it.
Yeah, I'd like to know how many um, citizens went through the Civic Center, too, please.
Yeah, I can get that from, I'll, I'll text uh, Desiree tonight. All right, um, so, oh, I'm almost done these. I just wanted a list of partnerships, because uh, we could not- Cause uh, we could not do it without, without help. Uh, emergency management has been um, absolutely unbelievable. Uh, Sheriff's Department, County IT, County DSS, County Library, Novant Health, Rowan, the school system. Um, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, Rowan Diagnostic Clinic, Meals on Wheels, Rocky Homes, FQHC and many, many more. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
You guys, um, at the request of the public made, uh, you went from these mass, you know, drive-ups. To appointment, um, to an appointment system. Could you comment on uh, how that's gone and compare of folks serviced? Uh, under both models?
So, yes. So, um, under the mass vax dispensing, we were doing two hundred an hour. Um, with an appointment system, it's a tad slower, but I think the. The system and the, the, the fact that they don't have to wait so long outweighs that slowness. So, with a mass dispensing, we were doing two hundred an hour. With our appointments, we're still doing very well, about a hundred and seventy per hour. So, a slight drop, um, but um, I think it is worth um. For our community not have to wait that long.
Isn't part of that uh, waiting, um, getting the insurance information though?
While, when they're in paperwork, when they receive their paperwork Judy, um, we, we have them fill out the top part and it is. Uh, they have to fill out their insurance um, information there. So sometimes it does take a little while longer. Um, cause they've got to fuddle with their card and take it out, but um, sometimes they, they just outright reject it and don't want to give it. Um, and that's okay too. Um.
But when did, when did you start collecting the insurance information?
Um. About three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago. And um, how much does a county save by able to build that? To Medicaid and the private pay insurance?
Well, we're not saving quite yet. I think we will see savings as we move forward. Um, but um. Right now, we're seeing a loss just because it's taking more of our staff time and staff hours to collect the insurance. But we've just done it for the last three weeks. I think as staff.
Rephrase that question. How much per dose? Are we able to get back for the administration?
So, first dose I believe is around sixteen, sixteen dollars and some change. And then for the second dose, I believe it's twenty-eight. Thank you.
So as we talk about all this, it seems to me that we can build. A pretty efficient system. But if we don't have supply, system breaks down. Um, I don't know if it's a federal problem. I don't, well, let me, let me retract that. Um, it might be a market problem. I mean, the, this isn't just, we don't wish this into existence. There's real companies and real people that are um, smart folks that are manufacturing this. So, uh, getting this all up uh, into production is uh, is a pretty amazing thing. I, I, I just, a- as we end up wrapping this up. I, I'd really like to have, uh, whether it's privately or, I, I'd just like to know what can we do as a county? To uh, influence the folks at the state that continue sending us three thousand a week. It seems to me to be activity-based and I would just want to make sure that we're all about those activities. Uh, we were on our college call today and Catawba College has um. A, a school of medicine, school of nursing. And they have forty-five staff and uh, nursing students that I think have been to Greensboro. And they've been um, through the uh, classes to get certified to, to give these. Um, and so, uh, Dr. Nelson and Dr. Davis from Catawba. Have graciously offered to try to help us in this uh, process uh, to become another location. Um, to provide these. They've actually got uh, some of the freezer uh, systems. That are needed to keep some of this at a remarkably cold state. Um, and then they've got the trained folks that are available, but uh, all of that's great. Um, but unless we've got the supply, um, the, the fanciest, most efficient system in the country. Just doesn't matter. So, um, I, I'd like to find out just more about how can we consistently. Provide um, events or whatever that might be in order to uh, move that number from three hundred. To a more consistent three thousand or more.
So it also, Commissioner's gonna depend on um, how much. So, when I kind of gone, went through the vaccine process and how we get the vaccine. The state also gets allocated from the federal government. And for example, last week or the week before, um, the state of North Carolina was allocated a hundred and twenty thousand doses. That's nothing. I mean, that wouldn't even vaccinate all our community members here.
Well, if you split it up by county, it's uh, it's about eleven thousand per county.
So.
And, and they're not gonna do it that way.
No, no, it, it, they go to the, usually the mega counties or the mega distribution sites. So, that, 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 that's part of it. So, we can possibly get more federal.
What's a mega distribution site?
Like um.
Cancer Stadium.
The way, yeah, the race track.
Okay, well.
Cause I believe they had like sixteen thousand people.
All right, dumb insure, no, a dumb commissioner question. Can we set up a mega site? I mean, we, we don't know until, until we ask.
Sure. Uh, I, I think we can. Um, we have a really strong team. Um. Are, are, do you have a specific location in mind or are you thinking?
I don't. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, how can we as a community? Either we sit back and we accept our three hundred and go quietly into the night. Or we try to get as many as three thousand a week. Or, on the behalf of the folks of the county, I mean, what do we have to do to, to outperform? What we're doing and it, it may be thinking much bigger than, than what we are and. So, you know, we've got a lot of, we got a lot of high schools with. Football stadiums and we got colleges with football stadiums.
Got a Timberdater Stadium down here in Canaveral too.
We got that. We've got a mall, three hundred and thirty thousand square feet, a huge parking lot. So, uh, I, I don't know that we can. Um, but I'd sure make that call and find out, can we become a. I, i- is there a nut, is there, what's the closest site to us? Is it the, the track in Concord?
I believe so. I believe so.
Are we far enough away to, to try that? I, I don't know. Because to Jim's point. Um, we've been doing this for nine, nine weeks. Um, and I know we won't get everyone vaccinated, but of seventy percent. Um, of our hundred and forty thousand folks, that's ninety-eight thousand folks. And so, um, that's nine more times the nine weeks. That's ninety-nine weeks. It'll take us to get vaccinated and it just seems to me that, that uh, there's gotta be a better way. I mean, we're, we're kind of the folks here waving or flapping our arms saying, hey, help. You know, no, no one, no one from Raleigh is, is coming down here to help us, I don't think. I think we've got to make our way. We've got to raise some, and if it means, not just screaming, but it means, hey, we've got a plane. And uh, we've got a big plane and start sending us twenty thousand a week and we can serve folks from all around. I think that's, we, we've got the ability. This room and your list on. Be that community that's vaccinating twenty thousand people a week here. We ought to be doing it. Now, the manager and I have had discussions about this. None of us, none of us on this board are logistics wizards. When you were hired by your board to be the director of the Board of Health. They didn't ask you about how strong your logistics background was, did they?
Yeah.
Have you done this before?
No.
I don't know anyone that's blaming you for this. There's enough folks, enough brain power in this room, in this community to figure out how we ought to be. Doing whatever we need to do to get all the folks that can possibly get vaccinated as possible. We'll put it in their court. Let the state tell us no. But, let's not say to our citizens that we weren't organized and that we didn't have. I don't want it to come down and say, well, you know, these communities around you did this and this and this and they got five and ten thousand vaccines available a week. The question, why didn't y'all do that? So, I, I'm not, please, I hope you understand. I'm, I'm challenging us, all of us. Uh, we've not been through this before. God bless you for becoming a logistics uh, expert. Along with all these other fine, but emergency services, the, the services, these guys are unbelievable, what they've been able to do. Randy Cress, you know, I call him Brain. Remember the movie Escape from New York? Guy Brain, I mean, Randy's just a, an amazing guy. But we've got the ability. But, but, let's, let's be that county that says to the state, I dare you to tell us no. And then let them tell us no.
Sure.
If they need to. But let's, let's figure out how to.
And, and just so the commission knows, um, the board, and, and I have talked about this. And, and Judy's been on several calls where we've talked about this and um, I do know the state uh, pharmacist personally. We grew up through preparedness together. Um, I have, I have been that um, mosquito in the tent for her. Um, and I have asked her multiple times, I've said, we, we're showing you the proofs. We're showing you, we can do two hundred an hour. Um, I don't know many counties that can do that, Commissioner. And we've got the staff, we've got a great team that can do it. I've asked her for thousands more. I even asked her for ten thousand. I said, give us ten thousand, let us prove it. Let us prove that to you and if we fail, then you don't have to give it to us again.
Well then, let's do this. And this is the last thing I'm gonna say. We've got all kind of organizations that are begging to help. Uh, Catawba, Livingstone, by the way, Livingstone is now a certified testing site. They do their, their own tests. Um, I don't know how that fits in. We, we've got vaccinations and we've still got testing going on. So how can Livingstone be part of this answer? So, there's a lot of phone calls being made and I understand that there is, it, it is. The back of the house is on fire while we're trying to build a new front porch, right? And so, how, i- if, if, my suggestion in. I think we need to have a, a, a day set aside where the phone calls stop. And when we get emergency services and Catawba and Livingstone and all of these folks in the room. And let smart people figure out, how do we come together as a community and put all the pieces together? And Catawba, here's what you're gonna do. Livingstone, here's how you fit into that picture. Salisbury High School, the YMCA, the Emergency Services, Brain. And all of these folks and figure out how we're gonna create. Uh, a, a, a seamless type of, of, of system that we can go to the state with. And it'll, it'll stop a lot of those dropped phone calls. Cause I know that's happening, cause we're just busy. We're all busy.
Mr. Chairman, I have several other questions. Um. I'd like to know if um. If you have any plans to move our clinic indoors?
We are talking about that. We did a walkthrough with emergency management. Um, and we are looking at getting that prepared.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
Um.
By Thursday?
No.
Does that mean you're gonna have to cancel the clinic for Thursday due to weather?
No, we haven't canceled any clinics due to weather.
Well, I'm concerned about, you know, the storm that's coming up from the Gulf. And I'm concerned about our volunteers. Um. Last week, I can't remember which day, but the tent that we have. Our vaccination going on is over the storm sewer. In the center two lanes where people were giving the shots. People were standing in two to four inches of water. It was a very cold day. So, that's one of my concerns.
Sure.
The other concern that I have is that I have heard from numerous elderly people. Who, um, because they didn't have immediate access to the restroom. I'm like, in the building so they can just walk there. But because they're in their car in line, they have unfortunately soiled themselves. Because they can't get from their car to the restroom in the building.
Sure.
So, I'm wondering, um. Well, what's, what would be the holdup of trying to get this done by Thursday?
Logistics and time. We've gotta get that all worked out. I mean, we can do that. It'll probably be by next week, if that's what's wanted. But, we thought having a drive-through would be a great option for people that don't want to get out of their car. Um, I know several other counties are doing drive-throughs like Cabarrus. So, um. And then there was conversation about switching it to walk-in and, and we are definitely open to that. Um, we've just now gotta stop and, 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 and look at the logistics and get that planned out. It will certainly can get done. Um. Um, bring everything in. We can do that. If that's what you want, if that's what the commission wants us to do, we could certainly do that Judy.
Well, I think that we need to do that. And from my understanding, from my conversations with. County Manager Church is that, once we move inside, that we can stay there. For the duration of the vaccination program. And. We don't need cones because we're not gonna have cars inside.
Right.
So we're just talking about yellow tape and chairs and some tables. So that's why I'm saying, asking, why not Thursday?
I don't wanna, I, it's, I'm not the only one making decisions, so I can't, I cannot just speak for other departments. So, um, I can get with emergency management and law enforcement tomorrow and see if we can um, uh, make those changes. And I can report back to you and let you know when, when it will be done.
Manager Church, do you have any other insights into this situation?
Oh, Alan Chris is on, on the line, but on behalf of uh, emergency services, we'll, we'll do whatever we can to support. Um, the Health Director and Health Board and Health Department. If, Alan, if, if they um, want to do it inside on Thursday or, or, are we a, a, able to help them do that?
I echo what you said. Uh, Manager, it's, it's possible if we have the, the right resources and we have enough. resources and, and everything we need to get it done. There is a question about some HIPAA things we'll have to look at that we don't have those resources, resources currently, but we may be able to find some within that timeframe. But it's, it's possible. Well, like, like we talked about before, with the right resources and enough people.
Yep. Well, I don't know about the other commissioners, but personally, I really want to see this move forward and be ready for Thursday, because the weather is just gonna be horrific. And the other concern I have is the longer we ask volunteers to stand outside, and I did this one day, so. Yeah, it was cold and it was windy, and I couldn't even handle the whole time I was supposed to be there. But we wear out our volunteers when, when we put them in conditions where they're just plain miserable physically. So, moving on then, you mentioned talking with the teachers. And what are you looking at for a plan to deliver the vaccine to teachers?
It would be at the West End Plaza. They would have to come to us. And I've already, the school system is completely fine with that. We'd have to provide off-hours though. I've, I've said to them that we could provide whatever hours they want us to, evenings and weekends. And they, they are absolutely fine with that.
Okay.
That, that's assuming something isn't coordinated with no bond.
Correct.
I know at one point we were talking about our EMS folks going out to do vaccination at the school. Is that still part of the discussion?
That is not.
The other question I had was the Meals on Wheels. Now, the twenty-eight doses that you were able to give those folks came to West End Plaza then?
Correct.
Okay, so those that can't, that are homebound, it's my understanding that the two volunteers that were willing to go out and do that for some reason aren't able to, could you just discuss that for a moment?
Sure. So it the volunteers, in order for us to give the vaccine to the volunteers, they have to be enrolled into CVMS. And they were. And they came out and, and did a walkthrough on the, on the site to see everything that was part of everything that has to be done. And at that time, they just decided they couldn't get the logistics pulled off immediately. So.
So what's the next plan then for our homebound? Are we gonna use EMS or?
We are talking with EMS about that.
And when will that plan be solidified? Because we're talking about the seventy-five-year-olds and older.
Yeah. This week, we, we have planning meetings every week, every day.
Can you give me a definitive date, like next Monday?
Sure, Friday, I can give it to you for, for Friday.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all my, oh, did we have a clinic today?
We did. We had leftover from last week. On Saturday, we had multiple doses left over that were not used. So we have to get vaccine in arms by Monday. So on Saturday, we, on Sunday, we met and decided we need to have another clinic today. So we pulled staff together quickly and had a surprise pop-up clinic. And it went very well. We filled all appointments within less than twenty-four hours and gave all the doses out.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Do you have anything else?
Not at this time, Commissioner.
Feeling okay?
I'm feeling great.
All right. So what can we do to help you set up this community meeting? I, I'd like, again, for those who would watch this, that we don't run the Health Department. So we appreciate Nina and Adrian coming to meet with us. Derry, is there, is there anything you'd like to, to comment on at all?
I think it would be a simple matter to pull everybody together. There's already a pretty broad base of community that Nina and her folks work on. I think simply inviting the other players of the community to be a part of that for one of those sessions, put together events on how we could do some sort of a mega event. But I certainly think utilizing more of our Livingstone, to talk about already using our CC nursing students and faculty to administer vaccines, I think that that's going to be a critical element to be able to be successful with this.
Appreciate that. I, I just think that as all of these phone calls keep going on, that we just write down, I need to do this. And if we, if we could, that's what I would ask to come out of this meeting, is if we could as soon as possible. Th- th- this would save so much time, I think, pulling everyone together in a room. You're gonna do this, you're gonna do this. We have an understanding, someone's gonna have ideas in that room that none of us have thought of.
Definitely.
Some are gonna bring assets to the table that we didn't know we had. We learn that every week. So we, we appreciate you coming here because you don't have to come here because you have your own board, but we appreciate you coming. And we hope that we can be part of that discussion. Hopefully it'll, I, I think everyone that you would reach out to could get together this week and set a few hours aside, a, a whole morning, an afternoon, whatever it is. I know we're busy. I can't think of anything more important in this community to be doing right now than this. And I think in the long run, it serves our community much better to pull all these talented people together. So thank you.
Derry, would you have any, any ideas about how we could possibly get more vaccine in this town?
So I thought the thought forward here in Warren, it was a good help. A little sample, just to make sure that we're applying pressure in every direction we can. I think it is very key for us to be able to show the state that we have a collaborative approach with multiple agencies working together. And that we do have the ability to pull off mega things. I think those are the key elements. And I think that Nina did a good job with that, before last, she submitted a plan. The result of that was getting over two thousand vaccines, and I think we can continue that. I love Grace, challenge to almost go for ten thousand, see what happens. Let's do it.
When we get together.
When we get together, we've got volunteers, forty-five from Catawba, that are already qualified to do this. We could send teams out to businesses that have over a hundred employees. We could send them, we could do all kinds of things to get together and get this stuff done. But we've gotta have a vaccine. And she can't order it, she has to just get what she gets from the state.
Now, there is a little trick, and then if you're actually the one administering the vaccine, you have to be registered in that registered system, the CVMS system, through RFRS. That's what held us up from going out with the Meals on Wheels participants. Because the folks that were gonna go out and administer the vaccine weren't registered in that system. And so, like, I couldn't go get the vaccine, I couldn't go get the vaccine, but I was not allowed to because I'm not ready for the system. And so we got, and it takes another week to get someone ready. So you've gotta make sure you've got all of those, you know, backroom stuff put together so that when, that's not simple with sending out the paramedics.
Right.
And, and give the vaccine. I wish it were, make it like this.
But that's a question I have, Nina. What are the requirements to be able to administer the vaccine?
So administering and being a COVID provider is two different things.
Not, no, for an individual to, to take the syringe and to insert, insert it into someone's arm, what is the?
So that, to answer that question, it would just be a, a nurse or a paramedic.
But it's like Derry's saying, and I learned this today, even though we've got forty-five trained certified volunteers at Catawba, this, we just can't give those folks a thousand vials and send them out.
We cannot.
You can, right, right, right. Now, they can come to West End Plaza
Yes.
and work under their supervision.
Correct.
Or they can go through the state and be, and get their, is it a certification?
It, it is.
What's it called?
Yeah, certification, or, or registered as an enrolled provider.
And they can do it on their, we could open up a Catawba clinic and no one from the Health Department be there.
Yes.
But until they've done that, which takes a week, then they would have to work under the supervision of the Health Department.
That is correct.
So that's part of the problem. And I guess part of the problem with the Meals on Wheels folks is they may have been nurses or EMTs and certified, but.
Not to interrupt, Commissioner, it's, it's a lot of requirements. And I, and I, and I didn't go through the process, but I know you have to have certain refrigeration and freezer, you have to have a monitoring system, you have to monitor it so many times per day. It's just a lot of stuff that people don't typically have. So that's, that's part of it.
All right. We're getting more out. So thank you for your time. We'll, we'll move on.
Thank you, I, I appreciate your time.
Just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman. I think we're all frustrated with the lack of supply, and hopefully Johnson &amp; Johnson's vaccine, vaccine will be approved soon.
Excellent. Okay. Item number eight. Mr. Pierce.
Yes, sir.
We can make this one go fast.
Can I move it?
At a boy.
Small business grant.
Can the motion approve the revised?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is just an, an attempt to try to include those that we inadvertently, I guess you'd say, required out with the first grant. You know, like I said from the very start, we've never done this before either, so this is all new ground for us. You know, I had a lot of people call me and said, well, you know, I've got more than twenty-six employees, but twenty-five of them are part-time. And we didn't clarify that in the original grant. So I, I've, I've asked that this grant come back out to try to take care of those hospitality sites, to kind of give them some relief too, because, you know, not only is it the restaurants themselves, but it's their waitstaff and, and cooks and everybody else. You know, when they had to go to fifty percent capacity, well, you don't need as many people. So this is just an attempt to, to, to make it where it should have been to start. And then I, I hope we can pass this right now. Well, I just made the motion.
Well, let, so let's, let's, in ten seconds, believe it or not, let's be real clear. When we did the original grant program, I know you're pulling up your clock, aren't you? When we did the original grant program, we said it was from one to twenty-five employees. What we learned afterwards is we've got restaurants in our community that we all go to every week, that we never intend, we never imagined that some of the restaurants we go to every week had more than twenty-five employees. These are homegrown, small-town, locally owned, see them all over the place in the group, restaurants that we'd never intended. So this is to pick those up and, and them only. So Craig, thank you for doing that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the amended small business grant.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Judy. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Best thing we get all night.
Mr. Chairman, also, if the board would consider approving, approving this second or the first revised contract with McGill &amp; Associates. There's one.
Good motion, awesome.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
An answer reports.
Good evening, everybody. April's gonna pull these up here in a little bit. All right, we're looking at the January twenty-twenty-one year-to-date expenditure report. As you can see, where we are at eighty-five point five million dollars this year for our expenditures. Last year, we were at eighty-three point four. Duly noted that five million dollar increase is related to CRF funds, which, as you can see, we're, we're only up by two millions. We have another three million that in capital projects and departments that have been doing a real good job of working conservatively under Mr. Church. He's keeping a tight rein on all of us. On the revenue side, April, please. Thank you. As you can see, through January twenty-twenty-one, we're at a hundred million, six hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-three, which is roughly two point one million more than last year. Big drivers, of course, are property taxes, which we are down a little bit through December of last year. Sixty-eight point seven million compared to seventy million.
It'll bring it back up next month.
The next grab, the other major revenue source is sales tax. We have the numbers through October, through October of twenty-twenty-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. We're at nine point nine million dollars. Through the same period last year, we're at nine point two million. So sales tax at least through October is still running fairly well. Well, hopefully, hopefully it will do well through the Christmas holiday season.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And, and that is all that I have. Anybody got any questions?
I mean, as the, do you see any trends? I mean, we just keep waiting for the, for the shoe to drop.
And as right now, we haven't seen it. I, I do too. I, I keep waiting for it to, to fall off and.
All right, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Budget amendments, motion to approve budget.
So moved.
Second. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, that was quick.